All right, we'd like to welcome everyone to the Spanish Fork City Planning Commission meeting and welcome everybody out. It's good to see a few people that are here tonight. And we will go forward with our meeting as scheduled. I would like to recognize that our, our, our committee chairman is not here tonight. Todd wasn't able to make, Todd Mitchell, needs to be excused. He's on, he's out with his business, doing what he needs to be done. So we will start our meeting tonight with a pledge, and I've asked Mike to lead us in the pledge.
Audience, please rise. Repeat the pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start tonight with approving the minutes from our last meeting. If everyone has had a chance to read those and to go over them, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from last month.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes? Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Our first item tonight in our meeting is a zone change request. This is going to be a public hearing, and as such, we'll be going forward with the regular schedule of it. But Brandon will present that to us, and we'll go that way.
Thank you. We're looking to, the applicant's looking to amend the existing approval. This kind of shows the location in town. Let's jump to the next slide, please. Here you can see, when this came before the Planning Commission in 2022, the request was to add this rear duplex, as well as enhance the site, as two existing duplexes that you can see to the street. Let's go to the next, this is the site plan. The existing duplexes, part of the enhancements, the applicant's adding enclosed garages to the ends. And his request tonight, originally the approval was with hip roofs on the ends. Go to the next slide. This was what was originally approved for the improvements to the existing duplexes. And then the next slide, he'd like to go to a gabled ends. The Planning Commission has the ability, you can approve of the proposed changes. You can recommend to deny the proposed changes and have the applicant build what was originally approved, or you could recommend to the city council that the proposed changes be accepted with modifications, but you would need to be specific as to what and why you feel those modifications would be necessary. Any questions of staff at this point?
So Brandon, maybe you can just reiterate the changes that are, that are proposed. You went through those, and maybe you could go through them one more time, just so that we get a good view of that.
Just here on the end, so these are, this is the plan that was approved by the Planning Commission in 2022. You can see that the ends here of the roof, let's go to the next slide. So it's just changing the roof style on the ends, is the request.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
You'd state your name and...
Kevin Olson.
Kevin.
Yeah, basically on this, the existing duplexes have a hip roof on, or a gable roof on them right now. And when our architect got those plans, he turned them in, he turned them in as a hip roof. So all we're trying to do is basically keep the gable roof that's existing on there.
Okay. Is the unit that's at the back of the property, is it complete?
It is almost. It's under construction right now.
It's under construction, but not quite complete yet.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to tell us about?
No, that's pretty much the way, just keeping it the gable which is already existing, and not changing it to a hip. So that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so we will now go into public hearing. If the public would like to talk about this change, you're welcome to do so. We'll ask that you hold your comments to three minutes if you'd like to speak. If you're speaking for a group, we may allow a little more, but whatever needs to be said should be able to be done in three minutes. So with that, is there anyone from the public who would, who would like to make comments at this time? Seeing none, I, we'll go out of public hearing. Oh, do we have?
Well, I just have a question. I'm here about what they're doing west of the freeway. Is that...
That's, yeah, that will be, that'll be handled later, and you'll be welcome to make some comments about that. This is for this particular agenda item, which is this duplex option.
Commissioner Minnold, let me just jump in really quickly. West of the freeway, talking about UTA and plans for...
No, UTA has a meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
But I was told that there's a meeting today at six o'clock to answer some questions about the zoning and the new freeway and what they're planning on doing west of the freeway, no?
I'm trying to think of what that might be.
We do have a transportation...
Transportation.
...element of the general plan.
Okay, that's a little bit later. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Oh, yep, we will get to that. Any other discussion? Commissioners, anything that you guys would like to discuss, or anything you'd like to add to what has been said? I'm gonna make a comment, and, and I'll be interested to see what the other commissioners think here. We have spent quite a bit of time over the last few years with developers and contractors who build subdivisions and other, other structures in the city. We have a concern about how certain buildings look from the curb. And we think that that's a pretty important thing to, to look at, that we would like to have our city look as, as good as it can, and present a, a nice, it doesn't have to be beautiful, but a nice presentation. We have asked a lot of our developers and builders to dress up the ends of their buildings, whether they're on a corner and they have one end that faces out to the road that wouldn't be in the middle of the block. In the middle of the block, you don't see much on what's, on either side of the house, but if it's on the end of a, a road, or if it is, has that exposure, we've asked them to do something a little bit more than just to end the side. And as I looked at this, I looked it over and thought, I went by the site, and it's nice to see the new structures going in and stuff. I think it's gonna be nice. The question that I would ask of the developer, and, but first I'll ask it of, of the other commissioners, should we be looking at doing something to break up the ends of these buildings? Because what we're looking at right there on those two ends is what you see from the road. It's a driveway in between, and so it's quite narrow, and you don't see a lot of the front of the building, like we have on the elevation that's showing up at the top. That's blocked a bit just because of the way that they're constructed. How does the commission feel about maybe make some, making some altercations to the ends of the buildings that would make them more appealing from the curb?
You mean alterations instead of altercations?
Yes. We could fight about it, but no, alterations, yes.
I think that historically, when we approved this, we saw this and said, oh, it is a great improvement upon what is there. And we said, great, awesome. Now, as we're looking at this, we're kind of at the next step, and I would love to see proportional windows or some kind of character on the ends of their, on the ends of those buildings. We can't really ask that, or we can't really expect that unless we approve this and say, we would approve this if you would add proportion, proportional windows. My only, my only concern about that is, that is garage, that's the side of a garage. And so you put a window in the side of a garage, then you've got to make sure that the window is dressed in a way that is attractive to the road as well, otherwise it can become unsightly. That's a lot of opinion from me, but that's my...
Might be a good, good point, that it isn't a really good look if all you see is a bike hanging in the window.
Bike, or broken blinds, or no, you know, no window coverings, or whatever. But if it had, anyway, my opinion would be proportional windows would make that look even better from the road.
Any other comments?
I think I'm with you. I know it's probably too late for this project, but I like how we are now, making them do something different on those ends. But I understand this is...
Would the applicant come up real quick?
Sorry about that.
I will try and speak louder and move the microphone closer. How would you feel about doing something to dress up those ends? Could you put a couple of windows or something?
That's not an issue. If you want a window or two in there, that's easy to do. That's something that's simple. As far as the roofs go, it's just the gables existing. If you want to spiff up that side so it's not quite so much gable, then that's an easy thing to do.
I don't think that my, my concern is with the gable at all. I think it's okay.
Okay, all right.
But if we could do something that would address the, that end up with a possibility of a couple of win, you know, just a window in each, it would be proportionate.
Yeah.
And maybe you or your architect could, or your, your builder could come up with something that had looked good.
Yeah, that's easy enough. That's not a big deal.
Are you thinking two windows in each, or one?
No, no. Well, that depends. It could be either, or however they decide. I just think that the, that that elevation looks pretty stark, and, you know, not very, another thing that could help, just another thing that I have thought about with other sites, is that if you were to put in a couple of fairly mature bushes or trees that would be on that end, it would break that up as well, something...
Sure. All, all of, all the existing units that are there, and the one in the back, all that's gonna be re-landscaped. So part of that is part of the new landscape plan too. So it'll all be redone.
So that may be something that we could do too. Would you be willing to work with staff on that and just come up with something that could help that?
Trees or a window, that's not an issue. Our biggest thing is, we just like to proceed. We're almost done on that back unit. This was kind of a glitch, so that's the way we're kind of here, is just trying to get pushed forward.
If we could do that, I think it's a good, I think it's a good project, and we're looking forward to having it, having it finished. Thank you.
Could be a win-win.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to recommend the proposed changes to the building elevations on 300 North with the addition of windows on the end units, street facing.
Could we say proportional windows?
Proportional windows.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is another, it's a, a project signage plan. And Brandon, are you up on this one as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is a unique request. Our signage code does have some limiting regulations as far as the amount of signage a site can have. One thing that the code doesn't contemplate is, it's currently silent on how that is interpreted over different sites that vary in size or frontage. Currently, what we allow is one freestanding sign per street frontage, whether that's a pole sign, if it qualifies, or a monument sign. The sign code does allow for an applicant, in certain situations, to come before the Planning Commission and City Council and request what's called a project signage plan, where modifications to the allowable signage can be made. The code specifies specifically that you can have additional signs, or you may only qualify for one, or you can make modifications to the signs so that they're either larger in size or taller than the code would permit. This is a unique site. Let's go to the next slide. North end of town, just to the bottom of the screen is the new transfer station. This site is over 70 acres, and as you can see, it has frontage on three streets. The applicant will show their design in just a second, but the majority of the access will be from the state highway. And so they were hoping that through the approval of a project signage plan, they could place two monument signs that would be spaced over 500 feet apart, angle slightly larger, and slightly taller. Currently, we allow a six-foot monument sign. They're looking to go eight feet, and then they're going up to 88 square feet on the size. Let's go to the next slide. So this is the site. Here's the state route. This is the north end of the project. You can see the building here. Most of the vehicular access will come into these two. Drive approaches here, you'll have a truck entrance and a truck entrance over here. These red squares indicate where they'd like to place the two monument signs. If we go to the next slide, this is what the signs would look like. And so just a reminder, if I've stated this already, your actions on this one would be a recommendation to the city council, specifically if you're in favor of the, the project signage plan to allow these modifications.
Could you go back one slide?
Yes.
Uh, because, it looks like there are no entrances or egresses on the other three sides.
Right there.
Other two, one side. So this is the back of Sun Rocks Lodge.
Sun Rocks facility.
Yard. So there's existing masonry wall here.
Right.
You've got street frontage here that they'll have the access. This will be a truck access on 600 West, and then they'll have no access proposed on 3300.
So then, my question is this, that with this access, that, will that be a public access or mostly trucks?
No, that'll be trucks only.
So are they asking for additional signs? This is, these are the two sites for the signs, right?
Yes.
And they're not asking for any signs on the east side or on the south side? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. They're just asking for those two on the, on the north side?
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is the applicant here? Come forward. State your name.
I'm Marcy Boyle with Langen Engineering, representing the applicant.
Okay. What do you need to tell us about this project?
So one item I wanted to clarify is that the driveway off 600 is an exit only. So our primary reasoning for having both of these signs off of SR 77 is that that is where both trucks and employees will be entering the site. No one will be entering off of 600. So from a wayfinding perspective and traffic flow perspective, it would be most beneficial to have both signs on SR 77.
Are there going to be multiple tenants in the building?
At this time, the plan is to have one tenant.
One tenant, okay.
Any pushback from UDOT on the two accesses?
Nope. We're currently in review with their access permit process right now.
So the two signs here would be for one tenant right now?
Correct.
Uh, but with the building this size, it seems proportionate to the building.
Correct.
To increase the size and the height, okay. Anything else? Anything else for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you very much. With, this is another, this is another public hearing. So we will go into public hearing. And again, if anyone would like to speak to this, we'd invite you up now. Seeing no one, no one in the public that would like to speak to this, we will go out of public hearing. Any discussion by the commissioners or staff?
I'd like to make a motion when you're ready, but...
Are we ready? We're ready.
I move the Planning Commission recommends approval of the warehouse, HutX Warehouse signage as proposed.
Second.
It's been proposed and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Okay, next item on our agenda is a zoning overlay in a, in a district that we will talk about that. And we have, let's see, is there anything else that, no. So Dave is up to give us the heads up on this project.
Okay, thank you. We actually have three. And we'll start with one that we've called the Complete Neighborhood Overlay. An overlay to the district, incidentally, is simply a mechanism for the city to review a particular proposal for a particular site in the city that would require some type of modification from what the underlying land use regulation typically would allow, underlying zoning regulations. So potentially overlay districts allow for some additional flexibility. That's how we use them in Spanish Fork. For example, the project where we talked about the roof line on the duplex earlier tonight, that was approved with an overlay that we call the infill overlay. We have something that we call the design enhancement overlay. That, for example, was a tool that was used to make the site that Target ultimately is operating from work for them, even though, as in that case, when Target wanted to open a contemporary store in a building that, at least, the majority of a building that had been built three decades previously, they needed some, some modifications to the underlying zoning to allow for the amount of parking that they physically could provide on the site to be adequate, and landscaping and some different things like that. So just kind of by way of a little bit of additional background and sort of flavor to what we're talking about tonight, I offer that. The first of three that we'll talk about, like I said, we've called it the Complete Neighborhood Overlay Zone. If you guys have ever really looked at, for example, our Master Plan Development Overlay Zone, you'll see some similarities here that provided the basic framework for what we're proposing here with this new district. And in a nutshell, what's proposed here would allow for, to a small degree, some diversity by way of housing types that people could build and new subdivisions in the city. For example, right now, most developments that we have are developed, well, in certain parts of the city, developments that get approved, generally speaking, are constructed exclusively with single-family homes on individual lots. And I'll mention this now, if we were to go back in time, 20 years ago, 25 years ago, Spanish Fork City had a zoning mechanism in place that allowed for occasionally, in projects like that, for a developer maybe to build a twin home, or to build, you know, several twin homes in a project. And that happened with some regularity, mostly in the part of the community that was developing in the late 90s and early 2000s, kind of the East Bench area. And as we've looked at neighborhoods where that happened, and we've looked at streets where you have a mixture, usually it's, it's a very modest mixture of different housing types. As staff, we feel like that really has worked well. And we understand that there is a very significant need to allow for some amount of housing diversity throughout the community, for a variety of different reasons. And I'm gonna use a phrase now that I'll probably use a lot more in the future. I heard it for the first time a couple of weeks ago, by way of gentle density. And that, I think could be described in one way as allowing for, well, I'll show some images of here in just a second, on a limited scale, in certain parts of the community, when provisions are followed, that makes sure that the neighborhood still has the look and feel of a neighborhood full of single-family detached homes. Where introducing density in that fashion is maybe more palatable to a community, and as, at the end of the day, a more positive effect than something that's as stark as single-family homes on big lots and big apartment buildings. So the, the concept of allowing density in a way that's, that's more gentle is part of what's intended with this. So to touch on a couple of things before we look at a couple of images, as proposed, like I mentioned, the door would be opened, provided that somebody received the city council's approval on a particular project. I think that's something that's very, very important to note, that by adopting this overlay, the city council is not tying their hands in any way, and obligating themselves to approve a project unless they feel like it's the right fit.
And an applicant isn't obligated to use it.
And an applicant's not obligated to use it.
More choices.
We will talk more about that. Thank you. Yeah, it's really another tool. There's a limit on the number of non-single-family homes that somebody could build in a neighborhood. And there's also a minimum on the number of non-single-family housing units that somebody could build in a neighborhood. As written, there are requirements relative to the architecture of homes. To really try to ensure that, if, for example, somebody were to build a twin home in a neighborhood, it would have the look still of a single-family home, which takes a little bit of effort, but not a lot to execute pretty well. Does anybody have any questions about any of that?
What's the difference between this and a master plan development? For instance, the one over on the north side of Highway 6, that is, is it not Quiet Valley? Quiet Valley?
Quiet Valley's a master plan development, and, you know, in a lot of ways, they are similar.
They have a mixed density.
You can do a lot of what this would allow for in a master plan development. In fact, you, in some circumstances, could do everything, except that this actually provides an incentive for developers to include something other than single-family homes in a development. And that happens by way of using what we call bonus density. So right now, with master plan developments, there is a maximum number of homes per acre that somebody can design into a project, which is tied to the particular zoning district that a project's in. For the R19 districts, it's a certain number, and for the R112 district, it's a lesser number than that. And as the typical lot size in a zone gets larger, the number of homes per acre that somebody can do in a master plan development decreases. In the case of this zone, and again, it's really by way of an incentive, as written, it would, at least with what's written today, would give a developer, at least potentially, one half of a home per acre of additional development density if they submit something and meet the criteria that's included in the zoning district, and ultimately somehow convince the city council that it's a good project. So that's, I would say, probably the main difference, is that that's written in, and that is entirely intended to be an incentive or a reason for a developer to, to take a step on this. And I'll come back maybe to talk more about that in a moment. But by way of some imagery, I appreciate Mary Martin putting this together, intended to be fairly straightforward examples here of how this might work. We're looking at a couple of different sites with, with different zoning districts. The minimum project size for Project Light, what we're talking about, is five acres. The R16 zone, that's one of our more, that's one of the zoning districts that we have that allows for the most density in a single-family kind of a setting. But you can see under the scenario that we have here with the size of project and, and the density that's allowed in the R16 zone, that you potentially could take four lots in a development and do something other than single-family homes on those four lots. And there are provisions that would require the lots that are developed with something other than single-family homes to be dispersed throughout the project, to have garages oriented in such a way that, again, it looks like a single-family home, with the idea that really trying to protect, you know, what you might say is the integrity, I feel like that's kind of a strong word to use, but just sort of the look and feel of new, single-family development. So they look like that while providing some different... so they look like that while providing some different opportunities for housing in those neighborhoods. Another example, which I think really is kind of more in the wheelhouse.
Does the code require spacing of the ones that are exceptions to the underlying zone?
I think they just can't be next to one another.
Okay.
The way that it's written now.
So it does, yeah, got it.
I might want to double check that. But again, another example, this would be a little bit larger site, a different zoning district, not quite half the density allowed in this zone, so bigger lots. But again, just an illustrative example of how something might come together. So that is the proposal. I can't remember if I mentioned this to start with, but we've talked with the city council about this, talked with the planning commission about this a few months ago. It's taken me longer to get back to this point than I intended. A few months ago, since we last presented this as a concept to you and the city council, we met with three different development groups to just kind of say, hey, what do you think? Is this, does this have any legs? Could this actually go someplace if we adopt it? And I think we got, is how I'm going to characterize the conversations that we had, a little bit of a mixed response. And I appreciate the folks that we talked with identifying some challenges that they feel like they would have to making this work, things that would prevent them from making application to go down this route to develop property. And as much as anything, it has to do with what I would say are two things and Brandon and Mary were a part of those conversations, I'll let them either correct me or add to what I took away. First of all, for developers that in most of the time today, incidentally, when we're talking to a developer, we're also talking to the home builder. It's pretty rare for us to talk to anybody that's planning to develop lots and sell them, which I think is unfortunate, but that's just kind of the reality. If we're talking to a developer slash builder that already has plans for, for example, a twin home, that would either meet the criteria that we have spelled out here or be close enough that they could modify those plans without a lot of effort, then it's much more likely that they would employ this. Or if we're talking with a developer that has a large enough site to justify the effort and expense to develop plans, that would be, that would allow for this to happen while meeting the criteria that we have spelled out here, then again, it's just that much more likely that they would feel like it made sense for them to go down this path. So, you know, I mentioned that by way of, I think there are legitimate challenges. I wouldn't be surprised, for example, if somebody made application to get a project approved using this tool, that we probably would feel our way through the initial application or two and might need to make some adjustments, which frankly is not uncommon, you know, when we start down new paths with different zoning regulations. So please.
Have you thought about eliminating the spacing requirement?
I...
Those that are exceptions to the underlying zone?
So they could, so you could segregate?
Correct.
Maybe. We've specifically wanted to require the integration throughout the development versus allowing for the segregation. In fact, I would say if there was a shortcoming with the program that the city had 25 years ago where this was allowed and bonus density was offered to encourage this and that type of a thing, that program changed about 15 years ago, give some context. If there was a shortcoming, it was that there wasn't necessarily a requirement for that. So you have along one side of a street, twin homes, on the other side of the street, single family homes, not the end of the world, in my opinion, by any means.
The reality is, we already have that option though, they could just ask for zoning to be different in that particular section.
To get, to get higher density.
Yeah, we already have that option, I was just curious if, I could see it going the other way, I see what you're saying. They could do R1-6 next to R3 and they get what, if they get that approved, they get it approved and that's what they would have gotten anyway. I'm thinking about larger developments, the smaller ones, I'm also thinking about that and no spacing requirement in my mind makes it more likely that someone would do it, but I don't know, we'll see, wait and see.
One hurdle to having really diverse zoning districts in a lot of the parts of the city would just be the general plan and having like R1-6 zone approved in areas where it's designated for something bigger and that type of a thing. It's not inconceivable at all, but I think that'd be a challenge.
Inconceivable, nice, nice.
I just happened to come upon a neighborhood yesterday, delivered something to somebody that was off of 1400 East, about 1630 South, in an area of Spanish Fork I thought was all totally single family homes. And I went into this cute little neighborhood, turned in and I saw with my eyes to begin with, single family homes and then I looked again and it was, and it was duplexes that looked to me like they matched the single family homes in all the neighborhood all around. But what you're saying is, but then as I'm looking on the map right now, it's like a horseshoe kind of street with a whole bunch of duplexes surrounded by neighborhoods of single family homes. But these, but these twin homes fit right into all the rest of the neighborhood, I didn't...
Was that in Spanish Fork?
Spanish Fork, yeah, right here, right off of 1400 East.
They're doing that in Mappleton, just north of the D.R. Horton Development as well. It looks great.
Yeah, this is a beautiful little neighborhood and what I thought to begin with, I'm like, oh, these are mixed duplexes and single family homes, but as I'm looking here, that's not the case, it's a, just a small area of twin homes, but they fit right into all the single family. So this is, I understand what you're saying, just because I happened upon it yesterday, but I see the benefit of this, I really like this.
We're under some pressure as a community to increase the number of options that we provide to developers to do some certain things. I don't want to suggest that that's our main motivation here, I really do think that communities that give people in different circumstances opportunities to live in the same neighborhood and that type of a thing end up being better in a lot of ways over time. I will say that if we issue, let's just say, for example, 500 building permits for new homes, every year for the next 10 years, I would guess, you know, maybe like 3% or 4% of those homes to be built, you know, following this kind of a model. So I don't see this having a huge impact throughout the community, you know, probably for a number of years, but yet we think it's a very appropriate step to take, so here we are.
Can I also ask a, just to re-say what you said about the challenge with developers on this, they, were you saying they already have their products and their plans of how they do things and they would need to adjust their products, adjust their own plans? And that is the effort that would make it a tall hurdle for them to do this kind of development?
Yes, if a developer doesn't already have plans to build twin homes or maybe a three unit building that would have to, somebody would have had to have given some thought as to how to make a three unit building look like a single family home. If a developer doesn't already have that product, developed, designed, it really becomes a question then for them of, okay, if we go through the expense of designing this and so forth and, you know, maybe they have to change their marketing strategy and some different things like that, at the end of the day, you know, do we come out ahead or are we just better off developing an entire subdivision with single family homes and moving forward? And incidentally, we're working with developers, I think, developers that can build the scale that fit both categories, the category of, they do have a diverse line of building types and so forth and ones that are strictly, you know, single family home builders, so it's not for everybody.
Very good.
That's it on this one, I think, and truthfully, Mary or Brandon, am I missing? Okay, the other zoning overlays, I think, are a lot more simple. We're going to suggest that it's individually, incidentally...
This amendment handles a couple of other things regarding railroad spurs and large utility facilities. Is that pretty well self-explanatory as to what we're doing or would you like to tell us a little about that or would you like us to act on each one of these separately?
I think it's worth acting on them separately, but we'll do whatever you want. What would you guys prefer?
What do you think?
Separately?
Let's do them separately, we'll do this one and then we'll go on. So we, this is a public hearing and so we'll have to entertain a public hearing. Is there anyone that's here at the meeting that would like to come and approach the Seeing none, we will go out of public hearing. And are there any other questions about this proposal, this portion of this proposal? If there isn't any, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, are there, is there anything we're missing, any questions we're not asking?
I'm curious how many developers will take us up on it, but it is another option and I'm good with more options.
Yeah, and I've seen several projects that are really well done that follow this.
I'm not opposed to having this kind of thing interspersed in our neighborhoods. There are places where it exists now, some places that have done it very well.
Yeah.
And if we are going to approve that and each one is individually approved, then I have more confidence that it will be done in a good way and that that is an option. While it is true that the developers may not be as anxious to do this at first, the idea that they could get five more building lots is a pretty good carrot, you know, that's probably what would pay for the additional work that it would take from the engineers and architects. But that would be up to the, that would be up to the developer, no one's forcing them to do it.
And no one's forcing them to live there either, right? So it's just all, you get to choose.
That's right.
And you would know ahead of time that that's the way the subdivision is laid out and that's what will be, will be built, which is great, more options.
And I do like that a lot of the developers now have a sign up that shows where the lots are and what size the lots are before you even go in and build now or ask that you're considered to build, so.
I love that it is an overlay zone, so there's more input as far as what happens by planning commission and city council. I also love the idea of this neighborhood, so like if I was, you know, a parent of a whole bunch of young children and we bought a single family home, then my parents who were downsizing could live in the duplex that's around the corner or my, you know, or me in the stage I'm in, my newlywed kids could live in the, in the triplex, you know, just around the corner too. It creates a great neighborhood with a lot of people in a lot of different stages of life, I love that.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we recommend the proposed complete neighborhood overlay zone to the city council.
Second?
For approval?
Recommend for approval, yes.
Aye. We got a second, all in favor.
We have a, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that portion passes. The next portion, Dave, are you going to handle this portion as well?
Yes, I will. Let's go railroad, let's go railroad, so, so Mr. Haslam, if you can pull up the map, let's go there, maybe to start with, these next two are super boring, more than usual even, I would say. Right now, we don't have necessarily a mechanism in place, like a procedure process or anything like that to approve new railroad spurs. It's not a big deal, we've seen one new spur built in the last 20 years here in Spanish Fork. We have a handful of railroad spurs that are operational today and this wouldn't change any of those. And simply put, I'm trying to be really succinct with this, this overlay district would provide somebody that wants to build a new railroad spur, direction on what they needed to do to make application with the city. It describes the process that we would go through to consider the approval of a new railroad spur and it identifies one particular rail line, we have three different ones in Spanish Fork. The only rail line per what's proposed here that would be eligible for new rail spurs is this line here, which is called the Sharp Sub. So that's the long and short of it. Some of the motivation, in addition to just creating, you know, a clear process for somebody to go through, we saw a new rail spur constructed within the last few years, Wasatch Palette uses that. And we went through that process, we were just kind of feeling our way through it, we really didn't have the kind of direction that this would provide by way of process and requirements and so forth. So having the process in place is going to be helpful, we believe, and also identifying that as being the place for new railroad spurs, we think is really important to send a signal to the world that we do have some concerns about new spurs on the other lines in Spanish Fork. The line that separates us and Mappleton out on the east, frankly, I don't see there being an issue there. There aren't users in the vicinity there that are the type that typically would want any kind of rail spur, but we do have concerns about having additional spurs on the line that's most adjacent to, most proximate to, that is adjacent to I-15. Does that all make sense? Okay.
By way of definition, how, what would be the length of a spur? Or what would designate more railroad? In other words, would a spur just be providing service to one customer or a series of customers or, you know, could you run it three or four miles?
I think it's evenly, you could have a spur that ran three or four miles, it's not part of a main line, not part of one of those three lines. Practically speaking, no, we wouldn't see something like that in town, a spur that's that long. The spurs that we have today provide access to one or two or maybe in one case, three different end customers. And by way of the definition, it's simply an opportunity for somebody to exit one of the main lines to deliver rail traffic to a property that is not, or deliver, excuse me, to deliver rail traffic to a property, which you can't do by stopping on the main line.
So who is the owner of the spur and who is responsible for the maintenance of it?
I think the spurs are owned by the railroad, I may be wrong about that. And I think other folks are largely responsible to maintain the spurs, I may be wrong about that.
I'm not sure.
And this wouldn't affect any spurs already there, right?
No, this only contemplates, you know...
New ones.
We wouldn't have any ability to go, you know, retroactive on anything.
Trying to make sure that we're ahead of that if it is requested.
Exactly, yep.
Any questions for Dave? I guess is the applicant, I guess we don't have an applicant or anything, we're just changing our...
We're the applicant, yeah.
Yeah, we are the applicant, okay. This is a public hearing again, so we'll go into public hearing, anyone that has any questions about this, state your name.
You go, go ahead.
This is not in Spanish Fork properly, so why is this hearing...
State your name, please.
Greg Stodmeister.
There you go.
I'm not a citizen of Spanish Fork City, I'm west of the freeway, but what he was pointing to is not within the city lim, there is a small portion, but it's already developed, this is outside of the city limits, so why?
Dave, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, we don't have any jurisdiction.
Straightforward, we don't have it.
Outside of Spanish Fork City, so this would only apply to properties that have access today to the, excuse me, the Sharp Sub that are in Spanish Fork. Anything otherwise on that line would be, in our case, in the jurisdiction... Anything otherwise on that line would be, in our case, in the jurisdiction of Utah County or Payson to the south, or maybe Springville to the north, et cetera. So yeah, it just applied to us.
Okay.
So I have thoughts on the proposed policy. My name is Jackie Larson. Did you put the mic closer? Yes.
We want to hear you, Jackie.
You'll, you'll hear me. Is that better? So a couple of thoughts. Paragraph one, it does state that this provides an opportunity for the city to approve new or modify existing. The city may be within their right as a zoning authority to regulate how they desire to approve new developments that may or may not include a rail spur. That said, there have been attempts by states and municipalities to exert their authority over rail-related services and structures, and they usually fail. So just to name a couple. The city of Auburn in Washington State tried to require a full environmental impact statement of a proposed rail line reopening, but it was denied. Another one in Massachusetts, the Surface Transportation Board denied the request of Winchester, Massachusetts, to regulate the use of their freight yard, which residents claimed was too noisy at night. Winchester claimed that its zoning regulations prohibited the use, but the STB ruled that federal law preempted the town's regulations. So from what I gather, the city's not within their right to modify existing spurs or regulate rail service in any way. Federal law has broad jurisdiction over rail service and expressly preempts state and federal governments from interfering with that jurisdiction. And at the end of paragraph one, it states new rail spurs on other rail lines in the community are not allowed. So a portion of the Tentik Industrial Lead is located inside city boundaries and has existing businesses that rely on that line. So as the name implies, Industrial Lead, its express purpose of the existing rail is to serve businesses that wish to send and receive deliveries via railcar. So in addition, almost the entire length of the industrial lead inside the city boundaries is zoned I-1. And as I mentioned in my opinion, the city may be within their right to deny applications for any new rail service development, but they would not be able to impede the ability of existing businesses with rail service to expand and enhance the rail service capabilities. As that would once again be probably interfering with federal jurisdiction. So federal oversight of railroads is broad in scope and maybe lit, it has been litigated extensively. From what I understand, limited local or state regulations allowed if the regulation is directly related to public health and safety, such as compliance with building code and fire codes. So in summary, this is a flawed policy. I think it will not hold up in court if it were litigated. The federal government has broad jurisdiction over railroads, including the regula, uh, the ability to regulate rates, classification rules, practices, routes, services, and facilities, as well as the construction, acquisition, operation, abandonment, or discontinuance of a spur, industrial team switching or sidetracks. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go out of public hearing. And I'll ask the commission if there are any questions or any other discussion that needs to be brought forward at this time. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I guess I have a question. So what's the, so is this a?
I can maybe.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering, yeah.
I like Jackie's comments for what it's worth. And I think a lot of the comments, and especially the cases she cited, are germane to instances where the city regulated an issue that the federal government has preemptively decided is within their jurisdiction. And if those cases are when the two overlap and the city did something that the federal government should have done. Despite that, I'm comfortable passing a city regulation that gives us jurisdiction with the idea that it's possible that our regulations are going to, in some instances, overlap with something that the federal government has, has a regulation on. And in those instances, I do, I do agree that it's more likely than not that the federal government has, has the right and supersedes the city's right in those specific instances. Nonetheless, the city, the railroad's in the city. The city has an obligation to be a good steward of the railroad that's in the city. And I think we should take that seriously, knowing what I just said, and, and move forward. That's my opinion.
Joshua may have a different opinion.
That answers my question. The question I couldn't form.
You read your mind.
I think that, again, sometimes these things are preemptive to things that could happen. We see changes happening in this valley all the time. And I think that the city would like to be up to speed on many of these things before they happen and avoid bad things like what Jackie was mentioning. Apparently, those were some conflicts that had to go to court. And we'd like to see those things already in some kind of context that would allow discussion between the city, the railroad, the applicants and all of that prior to something just being bulldozed over us. And when I say us, it would mean everyone in, in that regard. So I think that it's a good idea to have these things in place. And if they need to be modified, we modify those in public hearings all the time. And we may have to, we may have to modify things again. But in the meantime, we would really like to stay ahead of these things. So if they do come up, that we have some direction as to which way we would like to go. Any other discussion?
Question for Jackie, have you ever been to Auburn, Washington? I grew up in the town, right next to it. I went to the dentist and the doctor there my whole growing up years. It's a great place.
Did you ever use the railroad?
Never used the railroad there. No, that's not true. I did take a train trip.
There you go.
All right. I'd entertain a motion.
I move the Planning Commission recommends the changes to the Title 15 Railroad Spurs Regulation.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes.
Okay, last one, maybe the most boring of the three. Large utility facilities, same concept. Creating a mechanism whereby, as different, really big utility things need to be constructed in the community, which incidentally, the types of things that are envisioned here probably would, would cross a significant part, a large area of the community. They might therefore go through different parts of the community that, among other things, are zoned differently. Which is particularly in this case, why the overlay, we think, seems to make sense. Because this would apply in a number of different zoning districts. If, for example, and I'm just going to use some examples for the sake of trying to illustrate something, okay? Let's say that somebody in Central Utah Water, they've done quite a bit of work around the mouth of the canyon. I'm going to kind of play on that a little bit. But let's say that there was need to build a new canal from the Spanish Fork River across the east bench, you know, to where it went through a large swath of the community. That potentially would be considered a large utility facility. And whatever entity it would be that wanted to construct that, you know, by way of this overlay would have a roadmap to go through by way of receiving local approval to be able to construct that. Power lines, frankly, is probably the more common thing that would come into play. There are a lot of different entities that deliver power throughout our part of the world, biggest Rocky Mountain Power. This, for example, would apply to them as they contemplate their future and where new power corridors would be constructed. As an overlay, this gives the city, like we talked about a little bit earlier, ultimately the City Council, an opportunity to make an evaluation and to use some discretion by way of how things get approved, maybe what's required with certain projects. Again, just illustratively throw out a couple of examples of things that we think the city would be in a better position to address with this in place than we would be if we don't have this. If somebody wanted to build a big canal across part of the community, we would want to have some conversations with whoever built that canal about, for example, where we could rely on locations to cross the canal, maybe with streets, maybe with utilities, different things like that. We could plan for the community's future needs as those facilities are being designed and developed to limit their impact. Part of the origin of this is experience that we've had with the large power corridor. I guess it kind of does what I described with the canal on the northeast bench. It kind of comes from the mouth of the canyon and goes north to Springville's boundary through Springville, up through Provo and so forth. We have a good relationship with Rocky Mountain Power. But it's a challenge, honestly. As properties in that area change use, to be able to build facilities that are needed to make those neighborhoods connect the way that we think that they should and otherwise just to create the kind of place that, that we think that area should be. If we had an opportunity, if we could go back in time, I'm guessing it's probably 50 years ago, when those lines were constructed originally. And at that point in time, have been able to have had a conversation about, okay, every 1,200 feet, there's going to be an easement provided for a future local street or for utility crossings and that type of a thing. That would have been very beneficial for us at that point in time. And should something like that be constructed in the future, we want to do what we can to retain an ability to, to plan accordingly. So in a nutshell, that's the origin for this. Again, right now, we don't really have any procedure process identified in our ordinance. We don't have a zoning district identified that would, would accommodate the things I just described necessarily. And without that, we're in a pretty poor position by way of administering any kind of land use regulation at our level. So how much of that makes sense? That make? It's a little different. But, and incidentally, I'm guessing that a project that would qualify here might come around once a decade, maybe not even that frequently. So pretty, pretty low, low likelihood that you'd see something soon here.
Okay. Any more discussion with staff before we go into public hearing? Seeing none, we will go into public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak to this is welcome to come up. State your name again, just for the record.
I am still Jackie.
Still?
Yes.
Okay.
So the greater than 48-inch water line and improvements to it, is that within the city's purview to impede on any sort of water facility to deliver water to their customers? And I have some concerns about specifically where it says that the map of location, including parcel numbers of all impacted properties. The power side of it, I don't care, but water one concerns me. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Greg Stodmeister, so I'm interested, just because he mentioned canals and he talked about going from the Spanish Fork River. So is he talking about taking water from the Spanish Fork River to create this canal? Cause I get my water shares.
Just a quick comment, no. The short answer is no. No, there's not a canal planned, nor would they be able to take water from the river without further action on water rights, and that isn't likely at all. So no. Yeah, the short answer is no, it has nothing to do with that. That was just an example. But thanks for the question. Any other questions, concerns? Seeing none, we'll go out of public hearing. Any questions from the commissioners or from staff? Anything we need to clarify about this?
Nope.
I'll make one comment quickly that I think that the city has a good rapport with, specific, specifically with the power company because we have now an electric park that exists in their right of way. You know, and that's a great addition to the city, but that was after the fact. We've seen the same power line in South Provo that has a long park. I don't, what, do they call it utili, what do they call that park, Dave?
Electric park.
What is it?
Electric park.
Electric park, I think, is what they call it over in Provo. It's a great place, it's very green, playgrounds and everything like that. I think the utilities try their best to, to make things as, as nice as they can. But at the same time, we all like the things that are associated with them. So again, it's a good thing to, I think we're trying to just make sure that the city is involved where the city is involved with those things. So I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we recommend that the City Council pass the large utility overlay modification to Title 15.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't ask for any opposed before. That passes. Thank you very much, and thank you for the comments, by the way, to the public. Now we move to our next item, which is another public hearing that will be conducted. And this is for the element of the general plan revisions. And we'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll go over, these are some revisions to our transportation master plan or transportation section of the general plan. Here's a quick list of the, move down just a little bit on that, Brad. The, a quick list of the proposed changes that we're going to look at today. And we'll, we'll walk through each one. And then if you have questions, let me know. Next. So the first change we're proposing is we were showing a roundabout where some offset local streets came into an intersection. We're now not showing that roundabout. Just kind of looking at it closer. We don't know how feasible it is in, in that existing local intersection. So we're proposing to take that out of the master plan.
Would you explain where this is exactly? We can see this on 600 East.
Yeah, 600 East.
I think we all know, if you explain that a little bit, we'll know exactly where that is.
Yeah, so 600 East and Scenic Drive, kind of, this is like the cemetery area.
Junior High?
Or, yeah, and Junior High's up, uh, right there.
So as you enter that neighborhood now, there is a large sign there that directs the traffic in that Y configuration, is that right?
Yeah, that is correct, yes.
No, it's not Wolf Hollow. What's, what's the name of it? You went.
I thought it was. It's a big sign that's Wolf Hollow, right there.
So there was a, so there was a roundabout that was proposed there?
We were proposing a roundabout, but.
So not existing, it's just in the plan?
Yeah, just, it was shown in the plan.
This is the plan, not what is being built. This is the plan.
This is just our master plan as us looking out at the future.
Very good.
It's kind of right here.
That's it, and you can see the sign there in the road.
Roundabouts work, work well and we like them for safety reasons, but on local roads, they don't always make sense on these smaller traffic roads.
But you're proposing to remove that from the plan?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The next one, changes we're looking at is some changes to River Bottoms. This, the changes we're showing line up more with what Mountain Line Association's model and alignments show for this area. That's what we had before. Some of the change is the way River Bottom Road comes down into where it meets, in the future, it would meet with the 1150 East. Just trying to. Just trying to better align these roads where they match, and then where it continues south to Salem.
Could you zoom, is there a way to zoom in closer on that?
Yeah, let's look at that a little closer because and get the feel for the River Bottoms there. Thank you.
Yeah, we've always been kinda showing these these roads connecting. The biggest change is just more of the alignment of them and and where they do connect.
So, so this is the the light on Main Street now that's right there at the dugout. Is that right?
No, yellows, future lights. So this is this Cal Pack right here, up on the hill. So, this would be.
Oh, and that's South Lane. Excuse me, yes. I was looking at Southfield and thinking that was South Lane. I'm glad that we asked that, or I asked that.
Yeah, that's Del Monte right there.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so where so the blue is the proposed realignment? Okay, walk us through this a little bit more. This is a little confusing.
Why don't you go back to how, what was proposed before first? There you go.
So this is like eleven fifty east, and we were having to come over sweep west a little bit. And then this is, this eventually connects to three hundred east, and it comes down into this area.
And this is the light?
That is the light. No, this is the light that we were just talking about. That is Woodland Hills.
This is the light that's existing now.
Yeah, Woodland Hills Drive.
Comes over and goes up to Woodland. This is Woodland Hills.
Yes, correct.
And so, the Southfield Road comes over and it is already existing.
Yeah, that's why it's solid.
Reconnected to eighty-eight hundred south. So the old proposal was to come right from that road and go down into the River Bottoms to this point.
Yeah, and then if you move.
And then?
Move it down a little, Brandon, to the propose. So now it's more just a straight shot, this roundabout, and then it kinda split, splits even.
And again, this is not proposed for construction. It is for the master plan.
Yeah, these master plans, we look out at the year twenty fifty, right? Just build out, basically. This this shows if the city was fully built out, and our population was fully built out, these are the roads that the model shows we need, so.
Okay, so that road that okay, so this is proposed, that's right through the middle of the River Bottom. This is the, this is River Bottoms Road right now.
Correct, yeah.
Yes.
And then these are extensions that are being put into the master plan.
That would be a brand new road that does not exist.
They're already in, it's just where they're kinda aligned is what we're proposing to change.
And this, and these plans originally came from MAG, right? From Mountain Association?
Yes, yeah, Mountain Line Association's alignment of them are a little different than what we had, so we we wanna match them.
And so again, again, as you look at that, with River Bottoms Road being here, this, this road is in place, South Lane, and that's the signal that is, that is on Volunteer Lane that way. Right there. And so, this is an existing road, and this is that, this is the subdivision that is the fifty-five and over subdivision. And the, what do they call the newest one with the high density or the higher density, the?
River Run?
River Run. So this is, that's River Run. Okay.
Yes.
And are, these roads are not existing at all, or are they dirt roads right now?
They're not existing at all. So, just traffic wise, as you lay out master plans and operations of traffic, like a grid systems, your ideal
Yeah.
movement of traffic, and so that's kinda how we try to lay them out.
But right now, that's?
They're just master plan. There's no exact exact location of, you know, we haven't gotten that far in the detail, but.
And then what about over here?
So that, that's shown in the current one too, but what we're doing is we're reclassifying it. The two red ones are, the reason the changes are are showing as changes is because we're reclassifying them as three lane arterials. Right now, they're shown as collectors, major collectors.
I think that that one thing that's very important is, I don't know if you can scroll up a little bit, it shows this, but this road is coming from eighty-eight hundred south. This is Powerhouse Road. This is where the subdivision in Springville is going on the south side of that road.
Salem, yeah.
Salem, excuse me, I said Springville. Salem. And so this road is coming down through the River Bottoms and across and connecting in to the road that has gotten a lot of attention on, on Canyon Road, and that will eventually go over to Highway six.
Correct, yeah. Yes, correct, yeah.
So that is going to be quite a main road that goes that way.
Yeah, we're, that road would be another option for the, for Salem and in this area to get to US six and I fifteen without having to go down our main street.
And these roads don't go in unless there's development.
Development or?
And funding.
Funding, yes.
And is, so right now, River Bottoms Road goes right here, and they're look, and the, in the plan, it's to go right here?
Yeah.
It's to move the road?
Be an additional road.
Or in an additional road?
You'd probably come off with an additional road to connect to this roundabout and just make a better east-west type flow or road. River Bottoms Road to widen it and.
And that happens if our, if our agricultural owners, neighbors decide to sell and develop and if development comes down to the River Bottoms.
These are, we're just planning for the future, so if it comes in, we know where to put these roads.
And we may mention that MAG came to us with this probably two years ago, was it, Michelle? I think. And what they're trying to do is to give us access as the, as the county grows and we're in need of more roads to get traffic in the places that they need to go in the easiest, most safe manner. This is one of the ways that MAG suggested that we do this, is through these roads that intersect and get to the different main highways like Highway six, Canyon Road, and on down. And none of these have any planning that has happened other than this is what the master plan looks like. And it could change, but.
Yeah, MAG does a countywide model, right? So, they're looking at every city and how it works together.
But the city has basically adopted that plan or that model that was suggested by MAG.
Yeah, so we're working with Salem, you know, in partnership with Salem and MAG to, to make sure we're showing it too.
Great.
And again, this is, a lot of these things aren't in, or some of this is not in Spanish Fork City Boundary, but it is
Currently, no.
Looking toward, right, it's looking toward the future. I have a friend that saw this and said, she, and she lives right along one of these roads and says, I've gotta hurry and sell my house. I'm like, it's, it's not imminent. Like, you've gotta have a lot of development.
A lot of development.
Or roads like this going.
Source of somehow.
That's what I told her.
Did she say, I have to hurry and slowly sell my house then, after that comment?
She just keeps asking me about every two years about it, so.
Yeah, so that's, the change is just in this area. If you wanna move down, Brandon, unless there's any other comments on, or questions on this. The next change is a connection that we don't have existing kinda on the Finger Hut area. And the Maple, and how it connects and interacts with eighty-nine and US six. Go ahead and go down to our change. So, you'll see later in our change, we're, we're now showing a collector road kinda through that as follows Finger Hut, and then we're proposing a connection to US six from that area. It's just limited on access, so we're trying to plan for two accesses for access to the area for traffic, but also for public safety. This change right here is just the trail, showing the trail. It used to be down here, now we're pushing it further up. I'm guessing the road's the next one. Yeah, go down.
Could you zoom in on that one? Could you go back and zoom in on it?
So this is trail part of the master plan right now, but.
And that's just proposed trail?
Yeah, so this is, it was coming down here. We were proposing, proposing to cross under the railroad, and there's an existing US six crossing. We've been working two years to try to get some kind of approval from the railroad and haven't really gotten anywhere on going under. They prefer you go over, so now relooking at the master plan, we're proposing to change that trail crossing up here more north by where eighty-nine ties into US six.
This is the, this is Moark Junction? Is that right? Where Highway six turns onto eighty-nine going toward Mapleton?
Yes.
Moark Junction, right here.
If you go down.
Is there a tunnel there, or is that a proposed to go over?
No, we would go down to the next one too, Brandon. Thanks. So what we're proposing, and it goes along with the trail, is is a collector road through, this is Finger Hut now, to bridge over both a road and a, and trail together. And then a signal would need to be installed at that intersection with eighty-nine and US six. There's also the, still the option that we're looking at is you, you bridge over the railroad with the trail. There's some space between the the track and US six that you could continue the trail down to that existing US six crossing.
Isn't that road already there?
Yes, but it's not.
Connecting.
It's not built as a collector road right now, yeah. And it's, I think it is private, yeah.
I'm so sorry. So you're saying that's gonna go, it won't go over Highway six, but it would go over the?
Yeah, just over the railroad right there, cause.
At an intersection.
Highway six already bridges over the railroad.
Right.
So we would propose, we're proposing to bridge kinda south of that bridge.
Okay, so not over Highway six, because there's a lot of tall stuff that comes down Highway six?
Correct, yeah. There's power lines and everything. So this is, this is another change, what we're doing. We've been meeting with UDOT's team that's doing the environmental and the inter, the Center Street interchange. We're expecting their report to be finalized February of next year, of twenty-five. But in prior years, we were anticipating the interchange design that was done by a consultant years ago, and it kinda showed you know, northbound I fifteen, traffic getting off of I fifteen here to what's SR one fifteen? And then going to Main Street. Since UDOT's started their environmental assessment and has gotten in more design detail, we're anticipating that they're now gonna show this interchange as a spooey. And so, that kinda affects how we see and and can operate SR one fifteen. So if you move down, Brandon, if if this becomes a spooey, what it does is they would have to cut off the I fifteen crossing under I fifteen of one hundred south, like currently crosses under. And so, in anticipation of this happening, what what we're now showing in our master plan is SR one fifteen would have to bridge over I fifteen to get to this west side and and run north and connect north. This is four hundred north, so it's kinda, we're changing that SR one fifteen alignment in anticipation that this is kinda what UDOT's gonna show on their interchange environmental. With that change, it it changes what these local roads here do a little. Now, one hundred south and SR one fifteen as it comes down and continues south, because this would have to raise vertically to get over I fifteen. This this direct connection's no longer viable or or wouldn't be possible. So now we're showing this collector coming, coming down here. There's existing resident homes right here. It'd be kinda right in the back of those homes. And then it would be able to connect down here where it's, where that crossing's lower to the ground. Just grade wise, that's kinda where it has to connect to make that work, so.
This is existing right now over the freeway?
No, this would be.
Proposed, but this does go over the freeway right here, right, toward Benning?
Yes, this goes, and then right here, S one hundred south crosses under I fifteen. But if, if UDOT proposed a spooey or, and if whenever it was built, that crossing would go away.
So for the layman, public, can you explain what a spooey is?
It's more of, instead of exiting I fifteen early, you would exit it right at Center Street. And then, kind of, I'm trying to think of what intersection. Yeah, like four hundred south in Springville. Thanks, Brandon. That's kind of like a spooey.
A spooey, that's an intersection.
Four ramps kinda come right to that intersection or interchange and then, and then go each way, so. So we're, we're just trying to get ahead of the game with our master plan. So as they continue their EA, they can see what we're expecting with our local collector roads and stuff, so.
Would we expect this when there is a decision on the light rail, light rail isn't the right term to use, or is it? Is it light rail?
Right now, we're just taking this. We're, we're showing it in this area right now, close to Center Street, but
It's not a done deal, yeah.
Same thing, yeah. They're, both environmentals are going at the same time, UDOTs and UTAs. We're expecting them both complete by January, February. And when they get complete, if this changes, then obviously we'll be back here to revise ours again, but we wanna try to stay current as we can, so. I wanna go to the.
Oh, so when you said you're anticipating approval for twenty twenty-five for that interchange, you're expecting that the approval for the plan, not the approval for the interchange?
Yeah, not construction or anything, just their environmental document, where I should say completion. We, we think it's gonna be completed. Right now, it's looking February of twenty-five.
Okay, that's a question I get a lot from neighbors.
It's changed a few times, but right now, last I heard was February twenty-five.
So that's the environmental study will finish and?
Mm-hmm, then after that, you know, nothing really would happen until it's funded by UDOT, so. Another change is just to the trail. We, we kinda have two main trails here. This is the east side of the city, kinda where Mapleton's over here. This is one hundred south. We felt like this is kind of a duplicate, and one could be removed, so we're, we're showing that. Go to the next. And then similar spot. This is the crossing on thirty-four hundred east that that was closed recently. And so, originally, we were showing a roundabout needed, but with that crossing closed and since you can't cross there, the railroad there, we're now showing it as a future light. And then we're now showing, we updated to show the future la, uh, trail around Utah Lake, if you go down. We wanna keep. We wanna keep current and show that on our master plan. And then go to the next one. And then this is the last one, we're showing some anticipated changes on Main Street. So on our master plan, the black signals are existing. And if you go down, we wanted to show them as future signals with turn lanes. In case their Main Street's reconstructed or, um, UDOT ever redoes the signals, we wanna make sure it's clear that we need additional left turn lanes there, so. So we're kinda showing that, so. And that's our last one, so. Any questions?
That's all?
Kinda long, yeah.
Thank you.
I, I have one comment and that is, you hear a lot of, we see a lot of chatter on, on our city social media pages about traffic and I really appreciate that you are always looking to see how things can improve, traffic, traffic flow and what makes sense for our community, so thank you.
Thanks.
Any discussion for staff or any comments before we go into public hearing? Seeing none, we will go into public hearing. Since I would imagine that the majority of the people that are here now would like to speak to this topic. We will have a three minute limit on your, uh, on your comments uh, so that we can move along. We anticipate that a lot of you are going to want to talk about this. It would be helpful however, if you can combine some of what you're going to say into one comment. And please, if your comment has already been talked about, uh, let's hold off on, on beating that dead horse. You know, if it's been ma- if the comment's been made, you have something to add to that comment, that's great. But just to repeat it again in this format really isn't necessary. So do we have the clock ready to put up?
I can, I can get it, Ian, if you don't want to.
All right, well, no, don't press it yet, I don't wanna be on the clock. So, uh, we, uh, we are now in public hearing and anyone who would like to come up, please state your, uh, your name and it would help if you'd tell us where you're from or where, or what your, uh, relationship is to any of the properties that you are concerned about or any of these things. Remember too, that we've got quite a few of them on here and that's great. We will, we will take comments on all of them. So we'll open that up to public comment.
Rex Stodmeister, can we go up in maps before the time starts so that I can show you where? Just keep going up, up till you get to four hundred and Center Street and up? It's the one where you've got Center Street and you've got a road going over and you're getting rid of one hundred?
That one.
No.
Oh, that's not it.
No, it was a larger map, it's up, it's, you're going down and it's up.
That?
Right there, no, no, we gotta go, yeah, right there.
That's the way, that was what was in the, uh, just for your information, that's what was in our master plan. And so the one below is what's being proposed.
Is it the one down that's now?
Yes, that one's being proposed.
Okay, you see where Center Street cuts in, goes under the freeway and goes up to, um, sixty-four hundred, which is four hundred south going out? That's my house and you're taking it. And I'm just, I gotta ask you, when does Spanish Fork sprawl stop? You're talking about the river bottoms, you're talking about taking farmland and ranch land? And now you're talking about going west of the freeway and taking my land? I was told that they would take my house with this roundabout, which is where that red dash goes up. That, where it hits sixty-four hundred, which is four hundred north going out, that's my house. And they told me that they would take my house, that I would be able to keep the four acres that are on the east side. But you're changing everything out west just so that Spanish Fork can sprawl and grow. And we're losing farmland faster than we are endangered animals. And I just, I'm literally disgusted with it, that you would take farmland that is under, um, agricultural production just so that you can sprawl your city. And even the river bottoms is the same way. You're trying to sprawl the city all the way to Salem's boundary. And why, just so that you can get more tax money? I don't understand it because this is farmland that is disappearing and you're taking the farmland and I just don't think that's right. I think you've, you've overstepped the city boundaries by taking it. And I'd like to know what my rights are to say, no, you can't have my property. Is, am I going to be under eminent domain and you're just gonna say, well, sorry Stodmeister, that's just the way it is? Would you answer that, please?
We won't be answering these questions during the time that you're asking these things. After all of the comments, we'll address each one of them, so thank you.
Hi, I am Jackie Larson. I have my comments typed out, so I won't ramble. I'm the owner and manager of Seven Bar Farming. I'm married to a six trainee farmer, son is seventh generation, so Leland and Ari were all scattered throughout here. The general plan is a name and done. Aren't you supposed to design this street pattern to support the general plan? Oh, by the way, I'm talking about this one too, sorry. So UDOT's not made a decision, UTA hasn't made a decision on the station location. I've met with the project team and it's likely shifting. Also, this one does not align with MAG, which was suggested earlier. But this is ignoring this existing conditions, property rights and seems to keep expecting us to move out of the way. So a few of the major concerns I have with SR one fifteen. There is a relationship that exists between the type of land uses and the street pattern. SR one fifteen is a historical livestock trail and has a prescribed advisement, which is backed by the state code. This realignment takes that route away from us, which we have historically traveled when moving livestock to and from grazing areas or auction. Second issue is this, with the realignment, we also can't safely access our irrigation gates. Third issue, with one hundred south access being removed. I'm part of the UDOT stakeholder work group and as a representative for the agriculture community, both Rex and I are. Back in February, UDOT's project team met with Rex and I about evaluating potential for keeping one hundred south open for farm access. UDOT later presented their concept after going through the process, which developed, evaluated, screened several interchange concepts to improve access to and across I fifteen for all users. But then soon after that decision, the one hundred south access was suddenly no longer an option for the, uh, for consideration. Because this city changed their plans, which impacted the UDOT study, not the other way around, that was told just before. So for some reason, Spanish Fork City Staff has already given UDOT this direction several months ago, but it has not been giving us its blessing yet and it hasn't gone through city council. So this change creates a significant detriment for us. It's very inefficient, it hinders east-west access that we have historically used and creates several potential conflicts and safety concerns. So last thing, act protected areas. So on the topic of stationary plants and transportation corridors. Uh, in the state code, ten dash nine eight dash four oh three of the state code says, in drafting the general plan, the city is required to step one, identify each act protected area. And step two, avoid proposing a land use within the act protected area that's inconsistent with or detrimental with the plan for ag use. Interestingly enough, the following paragraph is then step three, consider and coordinate with any stationary area plans adopted by the municipality if required, under section four oh three point one. So y'all straight up bypass steps one and two of the state code. Even though Utah law does not say it's discretionary, um, it's mandatory and it's an essential element that must be included as forming the foundation of the general plan. And which must be protected from any adverse effects of development and help ensure the right to farm. So stationary plan, which has been the focal point of this vision of what the project aims to accomplish, is not statutorily required. HP four sixty-two doesn't even apply, but it has consistently been portrayed as legally required. That area there is county, not city. There's not a fixed station, nor is there a station located within the city boundary. UTA doesn't even own a damn property there for the station. So yet the city is pursuing the stationary area plan as the guiding principle of the general plan update with targeting transit oriented development specifically here, which is deceptively portraying the ridership feasibility. In that location, which lies within an act protected area, that's pretty significantly actually with an act protected area. But the transit oriented land use type is on the way other end of the compatibility spectrum with agriculture, so.
Jackie, I'm gonna have to interrupt you.
I'm almost done, I have two more things.
Well, your three minutes were up a minute ago. And, uh, I think that we understand where you're coming from, okay?
So.
So, uh, I'm gonna have to stop you there.
Can I just finish up my last sentence?
What's that?
Can I just finish my last sentence?
One sentence.
Okay. You're pursuing this while strongly suggesting that all property on his own borders is, were not and have pretty well been excluded from the planning work groups.
Thanks.
Name is Jake Isaac and lifelong resident in the Leland area, as well as a business owner of Leland Mills. They're on nine hundred south Mill Road. Um, on, in consideration of Jackie's comments, I, I, you know, she's done obviously more involvement research on this topic than any of the rest of us residents and I appreciate her diligence there. I think that my main question and comments comes in relationship to the flow of traffic and the way that it changes in terms of people's logic in their pursuit of getting into Spanish Fork Central. Where we had a continuous good flow access that got them to one hundred south and then into the center of town. Breaking that flow up because of this new overpass that's proposed as well as, um, requiring, you know, them to exit this arter- artery right here and go onto some smaller side streets. That the, uh, future developments that may occur in this area and bring more population and more traffic will forego any routes into town this way because of the additional burden of getting off a main artery, navigating a series of turns on smaller access roads. Or I guess you call those collectors, smaller collectors. And, and really not utilize something that brings them further to the north and west than the intention of getting to more of the, you know, downtown area. Anyway, the, the reason why that concerns me is because of the added burden traffic wise that that may place on nine hundred south as a preferred route for future residents to, uh, favor this way into town as opposed to where now this road is quite an easy through, uh, with no impediments as well as relatively no accesses from residents or businesses. And nine hundred south currently has dozens of homes along this route just to the river point here. With what I can tell is no option or availability to widen or give, you know, more right of way in this section because of homes that are only twenty years old and there's, you know, there, there's just no room to add the additional traffic measures, um, and asphalt that would be required. Not to mention that this is basically a cow trail as it is now. You know, there's a, there's a canal that undergo, under, goes underneath of the road. I think that nine hundred south has some longtime residents that don't have much intention of uprooting their lives anytime soon, so I don't think the feasibility of this as a major traffic route into town is, is a good idea. So I, I think every effort ought to be made by the engineers to make sure that this is actually preserved as a, as an appropriate choice for future residents that may end up in any developments that come in the fu- in the future to have, you know, let's send them where, let's send them where we want them to go rather than where we don't want them to go cause people will take the last path of least resistance. That's my comment for this particular issue.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, I'm Rex Larson. Is there any way, hold the clock for a second, is there any way to put a overhead view of the parcels? And put this over it?
You can go to the Google Maps, I guess. I don't know that this will go over it very well. Rex, you're asking an awful lot for us guys.
That's actually what I was working on too, I'm like, I'm putting this on my computer so I can see where, exactly where we're talking about.
Let's see what's underneath this proposal.
Cause this is proposed changes, it's not actively on our map, but.
But he wants to see like, wants us to look at what are the homes and stuff?
It's a major impact on us and so I wanna.
It's getting closer.
That's quite a bit.
But we don't have future on it, or what we're proposing yet.
That's, is that the prior?
Yeah, this is what we currently is approved.
This, this is what we have on our master plan now?
Yes.
Okay.
This is our current master plan.
So we're proposing some changes, but.
Yeah, but that's, that's my concern, that the change that goes over the freeway and impacts our farm or, uh, if we get forced out of where we've got our corn maze now because of whatever happens down there as development. We were planning to come over here and, uh, but if you put a road over the freeway and go right through the middle of it, that, that negates what we had hoped to do if we have to. Our family's been here for a hundred and fifty-four years. And, uh, part of the original settlers, the, the ditch that I irrigate out of there is the first ditch that was ever dug in Spanish Fork. It's the south ditch. And a lot of history there. There's a lot of, uh, legacy that we need, need to consider. You know, as, as we talk about Spanish Fork being pride and progress, I take pride in that legacy that's there. The original Spanish Fork settlement is just north of, of where our farm is. And, uh, you know, we need to, we need to consider that as we throw a road here and there and, uh, and so I'm, I, I was wishing you could show, you know, where that goes over and how it ends up over to, uh, fourth north, but, and I don't, anybody with a pointer that can give an idea where it is, that would be great. Can you do that? Can you point where the new proposal is? Yeah, can you show that on top of the other? Anyway, or even just point it with a pointer?
Just point with the pointer.
You know, I'm just.
So this is SR one fifteen currently. It's kinda somewhat here.
Okay, so.
We need everyone to speak in the microphone, please?
Yeah, I, I didn't hear the comment.
Yeah, we couldn't hear.
And I guess I, one thing, how wide is that proposed road gonna be? Is that another one of those hundred and ten feet or?
Yeah, it's, um, a major arterial, which is a five lane road.
That's, that's like a hundred and ten feet, isn't it?
Hundred and eight foot right away, yes.
Yeah, 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 so. And then what access off of that do we have to Larson Road where we access our farm?
Um, right now it's just a macro view, you know, so whenever it actually was gonna be designed and constructed, that's something we would look closely at. Can't really tell you right now, but.
Yeah, major, major ditches, maybe head, headgates and things that would be right under your road that would need to be considered.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm kinda with, with Jake Isaac, let's look at that original plan. I go through one hundred south.
Daily?
Daily, twat, between two and six times a day with various agricultural equipment. And so, and I'm not the only one. I think we need to consider how, how many, uh, farmers and ranchers come from Lakeshore, Benjamin, Palmyra to go to Leland Mill or to go to IFA. It's a major, major thoroughfare for, for agriculture.
So Rex, just for, for. So, Rex, just for, for the commissions, uh, this, this would be first south and under the freeway right here, and you come down here to your farm. It's off the bottom a little bit, but that, is that right?
That, yeah, that's correct.
That's right. And this is, this is Center Street and where the, okay. Now we've pulled that down a little bit. You can see that. This is the old sugar factory where the, uh, trust, or where the pallet plant has been. And so, this is what they were po- proposing before, and now they're proposing to do something a little different to cross here. And again, you have to remember that what is being shown now isn't necessarily the exact alignment. It is the proposal of where, uh, the general area would be. Um, but I thought it was, we'll, we'll talk about that and we'll discuss that later. But I wanted to just give the commission the idea of what we're talking about with your ground here, and this is the road that you're talking about that goes down to your historic farm down here, right?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Okay, that's all I wanted to do, really?
Appreciate it, John. And I'll go, just go on record that, that, that new proposal doesn't, I don't like it. I'm against it, so...
Thank you.
My name is Gil Rand. I'm an architect. I have lived in Spanish Fork and live in Springville right now. But, uh, and my wife is a lifetime Spanish Forkian. Um, can we move this up just a little bit? Get to where we have the, the existing overpass?
The one that goes to Benjamin?
Yes. So, if we already...
No, you're, you're right.
Right there, 115.
Um...
No, it's down further.
Is it down? No?
No, that is the one.
That was fine where you were.
That was it.
It was right, that one, yep.
Mm-hmm. So, if we already have an overpass that goes over to the other side, I don't see the reason to then come in and build this whole new big thing. We also have, um, the, the underpass at 100 South, and as everybody's saying here, that it, it's used all the time. Um, it just seems like we could work with the roads that are already there and make this thing work as good or better than what is being proposed. And make the farmers happy and make circulation better. And I have another, we're doing the architecture for the Wasatch Pallet Thing, and right now you're proposing to take 90 feet off of the east side of that property, which really messes the project up that we've, that we're proposing. And so, anyway, I'd like to see us not do the over-the freeway thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jenny Batsgaard. And, um, we live on 900 South, just east of where that, uh, over-the freeway exit would come down and dump onto 900. Um, last week I sat in front of my house for 10 minutes and watched 16 semis with trailers going back and forth and back and forth and tearing up the road on both sides. And I don't see how, like Jake was saying, how that little road can handle all that traffic coming down there. It's just a, a smaller road. And instead of disturbing all of the, the homes in that area, why don't you go up where the industrial or the shopping, you know, up by the hospital or all the new development is coming in? Everybody likes to go to the store on their way home.
They're doing that every day.
Anyway, just a suggestion that you go north and not disturb the agricultural and the, the, uh, farmers that are down in the south here.
So, you're, you're suggesting to have the train, the front runner train stop up at the 2700 new, 2700 North interchange that's going in instead of at a Center Street?
Yes, yes. You know, even if you did a, if you had a, um, an exit off of the freeway onto Center Street, um, that would be fine, but to put your front runner there with that additional traffic, um, put it up north is my suggestion.
Thanks.
My name's Lisa Olson. I also live on 900 South. Um, as we were talking back there, it was reminded that, and I don't know how that affects, because that is a state road, that first south, and it's a high density, or not a high density, high what?
Wide load.
Yeah, wide load, high load route. So, I don't know what that would affect, that road for the possibility of using it for that. I mean, they'd have to reroute that somewhere for a high-load route, because that's what it is currently, but...
Well, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Kara Lewis. Um, if you can zoom in just a little bit to where the proposed road goes over the freeway. Does this work? Okay. So, you're wanting, you're saying the road will go somewhere, somewhere right in this area. This is my home. Right now, we live on a dead-end road. There's no other access to our home. And what you're doing would be basically cutting off our access to our home somehow, unless you're making this even bigger to go over all the roads. My kids get on the bus right up here. They walk down here. It's very much an agricultural area. Um, over and over, over the past several years, we've been told by Dave multiple times, by Mike, the city council, you guys can farm as long as you want, and we're starting to see that's just lip service. That's what we're being told, but then we see that your actions are absolutely taking that away from us. So, there's already another road on this side proposed to go through part of our property. You can't see it right here, part of our pasture. My dad just got most of his land taken from Salem to put in the, um, the Loaf Mountain Parkway. Went right through his winter pasture. He had to sell off a third of his cattle. And so, how do we do that? How do we keep farming as long as we want when the city comes and just wants to take the farmland? And that's really, it's really frustrating, because I'm here, I'm sixth generation in my family, my kids are seventh generation, and we want to keep our farm going. It's not like we're trying to develop our farm and trying to get things zoned accordingly. We want to keep it a farm. And like my dad said, we're already getting pushed out on 8000 South where we own our corn maze. Um, there's already a new proposed annexation going in there that would completely surround us with development. So, how do we keep farming right there? You can't even get a tractor out on 8000 South anymore. Like, this is the last of the frontier for our family, who's been here for, like my dad said, 150-plus years. So, I'd really like you to take that into consideration when you just start throwing roads up. How is it impacting people? Yeah, we might not be Spanish Fork City residents, but we've been here longer than more, probably 90% of the residents in Spanish Fork. So, if you could just take that into consideration, like I said, this is my home, and I have no other access there. So, are you putting a huge five-lane highway right through, like, right next to my home, right through our property, the last that we have? Um, so I'd like, like I said, and please consider what that does to the farmland and those of us who want to continue our legacy of farming in the area. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jenny Isaac. I, um, I have a vested interest in this area. Um, I'm Jake's mom. Um, we've been involved with the agriculture, you know, part of this area, and I have a very vested interest, um, in what is, you're proposing and what's going on. Um, we believe that it's very premature to approve the proposal, given the constraints that are in place on 900 South from the intersection at Wayne Yowd's house, eastbound towards Spanish Fork. I'd like to point out that those constraints, those constraints, so that the commission can understand the futility of removing the continual flow that 100 South offers as the ideal route into Spanish Fork. Some of these are dozens of existing homes with access onto 900 South. We've got the River Bridge Crossing, um, an elementary school with school zones, um, heavy ballpark traffic on Volunteer Drive, a recently reduced number of left-hand turn lanes onto Spanish Work, onto Main Street by the dugout. This area is just getting so busy, and, um, it's impacting agriculture. And I think that you need to strongly consider the residents that are involved in that arena. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Why are you showing this map? This isn't the map that you were showing when I was a...
Someone asked for an overhead map.
Someone asked for the...
It's just an over, it's just a...
That's the one that takes my house right there.
Anyone else?
So, my name's Brian Red. I'm gonna shake it up a little bit. I'll start mine with roundabouts, okay? So, I have just a couple of questions. Um, we mentioned that the roundabout up in Wolf Hollow is not gonna happen now. Um, we talked about roundabouts that are going to be taken out, that possibly were paid for with city funds, and now we're gonna remove those again. Um, that seems like waste to me. Um, if we want to look at this map right here, you're gonna shove a bunch of traffic onto 6400 South that ties into 400 North and Spanish Fork. You've got a roundabout that is at 300, um, West and 400 North. You can't drive a tractor over it. You can't drive a hu- a truck and a horse trailer through it. Um, you know, it's mentioned that the roundabouts are safe. Um, I've seen kids almost get hit on that one at 400 North and 300 West. Um, I've had friends, you know, agricultural vehicles get ruined. Um, if you go out 400 North headed towards Mapleton, um, you know, at 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock, at that, um, three-way roundabout, um, if you're going east, you're not going for a long time. We went, tried to go to a ballgame and it was backed up 20 cars, because people are barreling off the hill and they're coming from Springville on the frontage road. It just seems like we need to make a big pause on the roundabouts. And this roundabout on 400, 6400, you know, tying into 400 North, again, we're gonna pull it out, because you're gonna have to have the high-load traffic go that way. You're, it's not safe for the residents or the kids that are going to school, and we need to take a serious look at that. My last question is, who pays for this road from the 1550, um, West going over the freeway that takes away the hot, the state road and the high-load road? You know, is that a, you know, Spanish Fork's famous saying is, "We don't build roads. We don't pay for roads." But we're sitting here gonna shove a road. I want to know who's gonna pay for it. And then I also want to know why we're throwing money into roundabouts and then we're taking roundabouts out. We've got to come up with a better solution in Spanish Fork than roundabouts, because I don't think they're safe. And I am completely against, um, this proposed plan of the off-ramps and on-ramps and this road going over the freeway. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
So, I'm Kara Lewis again. Uh, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, right in this area. Um, we have several, so like I said, I live right here. Dozens and dozens of people from these neighborhoods use 100 South to go out and recreate. So, you see people out biking, running, jogging with their families. So, if you take that away, you're actually taking out that access to those families as well that come out into the country to kind of get away and escape from the city.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I had, uh, 24 seconds left.
You've got 23 now.
Down to three seconds?
Down to 20, 19. Period.
Okay, so, um, you're gonna put traffic on 6400. Are you gonna take traffic into, onto Center Street? Or is it just gonna go up to 6400 and then dump into Spanish Fork? Because it looks like you're going under the freeway for Center Street, and Center Street, right up to where the dotted lines start, is a four-lane road, and then all of a sudden it stops on farmland, so I don't know what you're doing there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, the very first thing I want to say is thank you for your comments. Uh, all of your comments are important to us. Uh, all of the things that were said are extremely important to the person who said them, or you wouldn't have said them, and they don't fall on deaf ears. Uh, staff hears those. They work on them hard. We do our best to make decisions on the things that we, uh, see, uh, and are presented to us. By the way, we're out of public hearing. And so, my comments now first are to everyone that's here. I want you to rest assured that no one in Spanish Fork City is trying to take away anything from anyone. But everything that you do is a balance, is a balance. And so, we try to balance things the best we can, and, uh, I spent, uh, a lot of my life growing, well, I haven't been a Spanish Fork resident all that long. So, uh, as we, as we answer these questions, we're gonna go through each one of the questions that have been raised, and we'll have the appropriate person in, uh, on staff or someone else that can answer that question, and we'll, we'll go through each question. I cannot, I cannot and will not guarantee you that they'll be what you want to hear, uh, in some cases. In other cases, uh, I want you to know that what is being proposed is a proposal. None of this is written in stone, and it's not even, it's not even, uh, this is, this is a, a master plan of what the city envisions as things go forward. The plan that we have now has changed. It changes regularly. That's why we are here, is to hear those things that impact the city and the residences, the residents in each area. I want you to be assured that what you guys are feeling now, guys, I live on the east side of Spanish Fork, and I look down on the city, and it's not the same city as when I was a kid. I have a picture of my parents on the day that they were, that they were engaged up on the High Line Canal looking west. There wasn't a church. There were only about seven homes on Pow, or on Canyon Road. All of that was farm ground, every stitch of it. Almost every house on the East bench, with the exception of those four home, those seven or eight homes, weren't there. So, it happens, uh, things change, and, uh, we are here to hopefully make decisions that make that, those changes as, as easy as they can be, and we are all impacted by them. What happens in Leland and Palmyra and Lake Shore and Benjamin and the east side in Salem affect us. It really does. I'm not gonna say anything more about that. Uh, I'll get off of that soapbox.
May, may I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, we, we are planning for the future, and I, I want to make sure that the public, um, knows how far into the future we look for transportation planning. Uh, we are planning for, uh, 2050 and beyond. Transportation planning and projects, uh, take a lot of time to plan for, um, to figure out how we fund these types of things. Um, the Spanish Fork works closely with UDOT, UTA, and the Mountainland Metropolitan Planning Organization. And so, some of these projects that we are talking about are not happening tomorrow. They're not happening next year. Um, these are sometimes more than a decade, sometimes two decades away. But we have to put some roads on a map, and I specifically want to talk about, um, taking of pro- properties. While eminent domain is a tool, um, it's, it's not the first resort, and I want the public to know that there is a corridor preservation program that we often utilize for these future projects. This is for willing sellers that have an own property in these types of areas where we are planning for the future for roads. And willing sellers, when by their own accord decide to sell, there is a fund that is available for the city to purchase those properties and preserve for these types of roadways. And so, I just want to make sure that the public understands that there are tools available as we plan for decades out.
Thanks, Michelle. Did anyone in staff take the notes? I have taken notes of everyone, and I can bring those up, or if staff would like to handle those questions, uh, would you like me just to go through those, and if there's anything to be added or any thing that you, that staff would like to explain or add to or take away from, I guess? or any thing that you, that staff would like to explain or add to or take away from, I guess?
Yeah, I think that works.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, I, I took some questions.
Can we start with Mr. Staudmeister?
Maybe you wanna take a crack. I didn't put them by name. I just kinda wrote some of the general questions down, but...
Okay. He was the first one that, that spoke about his house and it being in right on the corner of...
Yeah, and I kinda, I just wanna re-say what's already been said about this is us planning thirty-plus years in the future. We gotta plan for roads in, in the future growth boundary. So, whenever development and these type of projects do come, at least we have some kinda idea of what's gonna happen. I think there was a lot of question and talk about using one-hundred South as a crossing. And, and as we, so far what we've seen with the interchange EA that's going on with UDOT is that to lower I-15 down, to make the new interchange, they would have to get rid of that existing one-hundred South crossing. We, we feel having some kind of crossing over or some crossing of I-15 between nine-hundred South and Center Street is critical for traffic. There's other areas in existing part of the city, like north of US Six, where we don't really have a great crossing of I-15 and it really affects negatively the traffic and the way even public safety gets to the area to the west of I-15. So, to us as staff, as we look at this, we feel like having that crossing available still is, is very important to traffic and just access to that area.
Can I ask a question about this one particularly right here?
Yes.
So, what, so what I'm hearing you say is that this would take the place of the one-hundred South?
Yes.
Okay, and here, it doesn't, I don't see it, but there's a, is this where the frontage goes right here, right now?
Yeah.
And would that take away access to that frontage to First South?
It would because of the grade change. So, you have Spanish Fork River right there. It has an existing bridge that is already too low. So, you would have to start to bridge up above the river and then bridge over I-15. And the current elevation of one-hundred South or SR-one-fifteen just would not be able to tie in where its current location is. So, we're proposing to move it to where, and tie in where grade-wise it, it would be able to work.
Okay, and my other, this is the road right now. This junction right here is that current junction where you turn and then it goes over?
Yes, and that part, we have not changed that in the master plan. It's, the classification of nine-hundred South is the same in this version as, as it is in our existing master plan. The model does not show traffic on nine-hundred South changing with, with this proposed change. The high-load road is currently on SR-one-fifteen with UDOT. And so, whenever they do the interchange and get rid of that under-crossing, it would change how one-hundred South functions and they would have to find a new high-load route. That is something that would have to happen, so...
Would this become the new high-load route, the yellow right here?
No, I, um, it's kinda, that's a UDOT decision. They have a, a department that figures those routes. But they follow state roads. So, currently, nine-hundred South and then as it turns to one-hundred South is a state road. And that's the route they tell the trucks to take. So, they would find a new route for, for those trucks.
We don't, we don't have that information. And it's not before us tonight. This is, this is just the transportation plan. We'll have to wait for that. The next, the next question was with Jackie and how the road alignments could affect the agricultural roads and other pathways that are in that area. Anybody like to talk about that?
Sure, I would just say, for us, this is planning for development and these big regional projects, right? The city is not gonna go pay to put that crossing in I-15. We don't have that money. So, it would be a state project or some other bigger regional project. And, and it will, as development comes, so we're not looking to go put roads in right now on, on farmland.
Development comp, then that would mean that the landowner actually sold the land.
Correct, yeah.
So, that would mean there would be only willing parties if that was the case.
Correct, yeah. Even on the north of the city, I think it was mentioned to, to look at moving the station to the north. Right now, that's farmland, but those owners wanna develop. And so, for us, it's good when we have a plan like this, an idea of where those roads need to go and, and where they need to be. So, now that it's developing, we have an idea and, and we can look at that closer, so...
And, and this, this plan is assuming that the station, the station and the interchange are approved?
We're taking our best guess as what we know now. If, when UTA and UDOT are done with their environmental processes, if things change, we for sure certainly will revise our transportation master plan to, to match them. I think a lot of people have good points and obviously care a lot about this area. I think it's very good for them to also go to those, UDOT and UT, like UTA's having a meeting tomorrow. Go to those public meetings also and let them know your guys' concerns.
Sir, you asked where the station, it, I mean, this is, right here is where they're talking about having a front-runner station. Nothing is approved right now? There's still an environmental study going on?
But you're getting rid of one-hundred, getting rid of one-hundred nor, or south, so...
We need everyone to speak into the microphone, please.
I'm sorry?
Um, we need all comments.
I think, I think that your comment is, is that, is that one-hundred South would still be gone and that's your concern is underneath the freeway. And it's a legitimate concern. Right. And I don't know that I have an answer. We have an answer for that. We do, we do know what the plan now is, but plans have changed a little bit since this was first discussed. And we're trying to make those decisions. The next thing is Jake Isik and Jake, if I'm not mistaken, this is where your business is, is right there. Is that right? On nine-hundred. And I, and I'd, I'd also like to point out that the Larsons are talking about that area as well underneath First South and along the river there that we've already talked about. It's important to remember what we're talking about as we're looking at these things. So, I, uh, Jake asked about the, uh, concern about the First South overpass, how it will increase traffic into town and whatnot along nine-hundred South. Is that, is that pretty much it? That's a question?
Yeah, with nine-hundred South, we're not proposing any changes with this particular revision. As we model even the changes on one-hundred South or SR-one-fifteen, it shows nine-hundred South as the exact same road classification. And it doesn't show any change to future, what the model shows as future traffic along nine-hundred South. So, we're keeping it as-is, no changes to that.
The reason that I said Rex Larson and the Larson property, we basically know where his property is and, and what the possibilities are to his property as well as to Kara's property. Is that right? That if this overpass goes over, it'll, it'll have a direct impact on their property that's in that area. Not only traffic-wise, but farm-wise and with their potential moving a business to there. Is there something that is, that wasn't said?
We, we...
I understand that there's, there's no proposed change along nine-hundred South. I'm just, I'm, I'm afraid that these changes removing the continual flow to one-hundred South would necessitate some kind of major revision to nine-hundred South in the future. I think there are too many impediments along nine-hundred South to justify what I see now as a golden route. I mean, you consider the hot plant out on West Mountain and the number of trucks bringing asphalt and other, you know, aggregates and things that coming from the west side of the valley, getting into the Spanish Fork area to access more development with aggregates and gravel and rock and asphalt, having to exit that art, artery and navigate residential. I'm just not sure that, that the logic of people will follow a route that takes them further west in order to get back into town, rather than just kind of continuing what they see as a more direct line to Main Street, which nine-hundred South is.
Thanks. Mr. Rand, Gil Rand, had a concern about the exa, existing overpass and if it is, if it for, if it actually fits the proposed area and stuff. I don't know exactly, if I remember the rest of that comment, but...
If it's sufficient, why change it?
Yes, if it's sufficient, why change it? That, that was the...
Is that...
Any further comment?
Sorry to remind me, four-hundred North?
Jenny Bazgard spoke about, this is a small road for large trucks and I think that, that Jake just reiterated that, that nine-hundred South is a small road. And it has been a rural road forever and will probably continue that. Any, any further comments about that?
No, we'll continue to watch nine-hundred South closely as that south area develops. But currently, the models, traffic models are showing as it's classified as sufficient, so...
Okay. Lisa Olson, she was concerned about the high-load road, whether it would be impacted by this and apparently it will. And that will have to be addressed if, if and when those roads are modified or replaced or done away with.
Yes.
Kara Lewis again is there at the Larson property. And that is, that is a special, since that is, that only has one ingress and egress, the old road that goes along there. That's something that'll have to be worked through if it ever is, if this ever goes through. And I don't know that there's an easy answer until we get to that point where planning could be done and, and other things could be done. Jenny Isaac again, the Isaacs have been a part of this community for more than a hundred years, you know, one of the first mills in the area and continues to operate as one. And I remember years ago that we had some discussion about whether we would make that a conditional use out there and I fought against it because that should not be a conditional use. It's been there long enough that it should be the use that is there now and preserved that way as long as the family chooses to operate that mill. And I understand the concerns there. Again, we're at nine-hundred South again. You've already had some disruption there with, with the West Park Drive. I don't know how much more there could be than what is there now. You've got a lot of stuff that could come from Arrowhead Trail. I know that. That, you know, it's not necessarily built out that way and you've got some building. You've got some land that's already under development and stuff. And so, it, it, it could be a problem and it'll have to be worked through. And the last one is Brian Redd. Mr. Redd, where's your property? Seventy-three-hundred West, okay. It sounds like you guys are pretty well concentrated in that Leland area and specifically along nine-hundred South with the exception of the Larsons, which have got ground spread all over down there. And thankfully, they do. Ah, come and be retired with me, what the... Again, I want, I wanna really thank all of you people who have expressed your concerns. What we're talking about tonight is a plan. This is not something that is written in stone. We don't have the exact locations of anything. We're trying to stay ahead of that. So, when those discussions do happen with the state, with UDOT, with MAG and everybody else, that we can bring everybody's concerns into it. And, and we can't do that unless we hear from you folks. And like I said, it does not fall on deaf ears. There is one comment that I will make that I think is pretty important. The city doesn't push out anywhere. The city has no authority to go out and grab a bunch of ground. Ground comes into the city through development, through someone who buys someone else's ground and then asks to be annexed and asks for a certain, a certain zoning. The city only reacts to those things. The only time that the city looks for certain parcels is if it's necessary to provide services to those residents that are now annexed. And so, the city is, is the entity that provides those things. I will mention one thing. I think that probably everybody in this room had a connection to someone that graduated from high school the last two weeks. I went to a couple of graduations. It was brought to my attention that there was more than a thousand graduates from four high schools in Spanish Fork, Maple Mountain, Spanish Fork, ALA, and Landmark. More than a thousand kids. They're your kids. They're my kids. They're not from Salt Lake. They're not from New York. They're not from LA. They're our kids. They graduated from high school. Where do you want them to live? I don't know about you guys, but my two grandchildren that graduated, I want them by me. I want them by me. I want them to live here and bring my grandbabies, my great-grandbabies to see me. That means that if they're gonna live here, they've gotta find a job here. That's not my problem. It's not your individual problems. It is our problem. What we're looking at is a situation that isn't going to be changed with just saying, "We don't want anybody else here. We're the only people here." And I got a pretty good idea, if we went around in this room, for those of us that are my age and a little younger that have kids living here in the area, we like that. We like that a lot. Where are you gonna put them? And that's part of the problem that we have. When that happens, when they find places, they find places with, that have been developed, places that have gone out and made huge investments in ground, put in the infrastructure, put in the roads, paid for the sewer and water and the power hookups. They've paid for that stuff, just like we did when we put it in. When I built in Palmyra, Strawberry Water users were the first ones there to hook me up to the power. I've got one son in Benjamin. Rocky Mountain hooked him up, you know? And so, we are trying to do the... Rocky Mountain hooked him up, you know, uh and so we are trying to do the best we can, guys, and I, I am so sincere about that. And I hope that we can continue to work with you guys. Please do not stay away. If there are things that you don't agree with, this is the place to come and talk about them. Uh whatever we decide uh tonight, uh we will decide to recommend or recommend that these things be approved or not be approved. The city council is actually the one, the, the body that will make these decisions and not staff as either. But I hear it all the time and, and guys, I believe it. I don't know a single city councilman who isn't willing to hear you, to listen to you. You want to know something, you want to talk about what your feelings are, you know, I don't know one of them that will not entertain you. And that goes with, for staff too. Their numbers are published, their doors are open, their next door and they're available. That doesn't mean that everything that we want, we get. I sure haven't got everything I want in my life, but I'm a, I really appreciate my neighbors. I appreciate varied opinions and feelings. I don't hate anybody for that kind of stuff. And if anything, uh I have been a lot more patient with uh other opposing views since being involved in, in this kind of a thing. And I'd advise you to all stay involved in your, in your community things. Be involved in city and in county and especially elections that affect the things that you love. With that, are there any other discussions that need to come before the committee before we take, uh, before we act on this matter?
I've got comments.
My comments are that I'm extremely empathetic to what's occurring. The overwhelming, I, I dare say almost every single time there is a road improvement, it is paid for privately with private funds, which means there would be a willing landowner that sold, is selling their property to someone who's going to develop it. And there's a bunch of parties that are volunteering to participate in that. That's, I'm not aware of the eminent domain cases in the city at the moment. I'm, actually haven't heard of any, I'm sure there are some, but the, almost all the time, almost all the time, there are willing parties that are paying for these roads and willing, willing landowners who are selling. In this case, I'm optimistic that will also be the case here. I'm optimistic. I also know this is way in the future and if the UTA station moves, there'll be additional planning, which is my next point. What's been presented to us is the result of professional traffic engineers' work. And um it there, it comes a point where I do rely on them and that's, and I'm relying on them in this instance. As far as guidance and feedback for you who are more aware of this neighborhood than even the traffic engineers is to, and the most influential thing you can do, in my opinion, is to get a copy of the traffic engineering reports and actually talk to the city traffic engineer about specific conclusions of the professionals that you disagree with and, and talk to staff about that. And they may agree with you and they may not, but by the time it comes, the amount of hours that have gone into that are, are a lot by professional traffic engineers. And so I'm relying on that and I'm relying on the end result being more likely than not willing parties participating in this development.
Can I just ask why the maps aren't to scale? That's not a four lane road or a five lane road right there.
We apologize for any inconsistencies or details. Of course, if, if things get going further, they'll be much more detailed and, and the engineering maps will be extremely detailed. This is, this is again, a, a planning map, so we apologize for that.
I don't, I don't apologize. It's a general, it's a way out plan, it's a general idea for if something's going to happen. So that's why, it's not to scale because this, because it would take a lot more hours to make that gen, all the, all those detailed plans. And detailed plans happen when development happens or when, as we get closer to the time to, to do it. That's why. But, okay, here's my spiel. Number one is it sounds like everybody's pretty okay with the rest of all of the changes, although it hurts my soul to see any roads planned through my beloved river bottoms that I am part of every day. But I do understand that we make plans ahead, so if developers want to come in and develop then their good plans and we relook at the plans and we see if they make sense, if what we've done in the past makes sense for the future. So um, and it's good for me to know that things don't develop until landowners want to develop um and then we reevaluate. I uh also want to say to my friends who live in all of these places that somebody mentioned the one hundred south recreation access. Well, that's me. I live, I live in east Spanish Fork, right over by um, just in the area, I'm right at the beginning of the river bottoms on the east side. I live right below the gas station that's over there, um where the Little Acorn is. And I ride my bike on, uh, down the Spanish Fork River Trail and I pop out right here at where the sports park is and I come down nine hundred south and I also sometimes access one hundred south, I access nine hundred south. And I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for um being so kind to those of us that love your area and love to recreate on your roads. There's lots of big, wonderful farm equipment that goes by me on my little bike and I'm grateful that um, that you're patient with cyclists, little cyclist, grasshoppers like me. And um thank you that your dogs that chase me sometimes don't bite me. And um I really try hard to be a good road citizen and a good um neighbor. So thank you and I love where you are. I don't love, I, I can understand that this is assuming that an interchange and a front runner station is approved and will, and that's coming along. So my opinion is that it is, I, I guess I should ask, what, are there any impacts if we don't change the plan, the traffic area plan right now? Um and is this premature to update this change for the SR one fifteen arterial connection before the general plan update is done and approved and before the empire, environmental impact study is done and the interchange and front runner station is approved? So my, my personal opinion is that it's premature to, to update here. That's just me. I also agree that, so uh there's a lot of people in Spanish Fork that don't love roundabouts. I am a roundabouts fan, but I also agree that roundabouts in farm equipment areas are problematic. Um and then um there aren't, uh, somebody was concerned about that we're putting in and taking out roundabouts. That's why I asked the question earlier, he said we're taking out the roundabout in that area. It's actually taking out the roundabout that's in the plan for that area. So there's not a roundabout there that we're taking out. That is expensive and, and nobody wants to, wants to do that. So that was my answer to that question. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, I'm not a traffic engineer for sure. And I'm not a landowner down in that area, but I know a lot of landowners down in that area. And to me, i- if we don't know what they're doing for sure on I fifteen yet, I always tell John, I just want my kids to live here, everybody else is going to go somewhere else because I don't want front runner and all that, I just want my kids. But I know the reality of it is, we have to, but I also believe if we're talking twenty-five, thirty years, I'm not ready to make a decision on their land tonight, I'm just not. I, I don't know the better way to do it, but I'm not, with the way this is and what I've heard, I, I wouldn't support this. Everything else we looked at, I'm okay with, just this interchange one I don't like.
Byron, will you please um address the ramifications of not um approving um the amendment, specifically the SR one fifteen arterial connection? What, the timing? Can you break down the timing for us presenting it tonight?
Timing, um, you are correct, UTA and UDOTs is not finalized. Um and until they're officially finalized, they can't give us an official answer on things like that. But we feel strongly that if the one hundred south crossing is going away, we want to show that another one needs to replace it. And we want to show UDOT that, um, so they can consider that in their EA. And if it stays, then we'll readjust ours, but we, we want to show that, that crossing between nine hundred south and center is, is definitely needed and, and the model shows it. And so we want to show that in our master plan. Also, um, this does affect the old Wasatch Palate property, um, and so we would like to give them some clarity. I, I believe they're looking to develop it or do something soon. And this now shows the road, instead of going in front of it along SR one fifteen, that there's a road needed between that property and the existing resident homes, behind, behind the existing resident homes. If it's in our master plan, we can work with that developer to make sure that is planned for and in that development. So it, it's a tool for us to make sure that connection happens.
Thank you.
So it's pretty important.
Can I ask what they're going to do about the irrigation? I mean, we've got cement ditches down, it's feeding our farmland, so how are you going to get around that?
Yeah, just typically process wise, as developments come in, um, we refer them to the irrigation companies and they work with them to, most of the time they pipe them. And where that development's happening, they pipe through their development. We work with uh East Bench, Westfield Irrigation Company, Southeast, um, just kind of depends where the area is developing, but we refer them to the irrigation company and we let them um work with the developers on what they feel needs to happen to their utility. They would be involved for sure.
Any more discussion? Okay, I think the discussion has been great and I thank you again for your, your uh participation. Uh we've come to a point that I would entertain a motion. This is a motion to recommend to the city council that the uh, that this proposed change in the uh transportation plan be uh, uh recommended or recommended for approval or recommended to be denied or to take no action.
I move to recommend the city council to approve the transportation master plan revisions as presented tonight.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed?
Aye.
I don't know what to do.
I abstain.
Okay. We have three uh, three ayes in favor of recommending the adoption of the amendments, one against and one abstention. And that's what will go to the city council. Thank you. Our last uh item on the agenda tonight is uh another public hearing regarding construction standards. Who gets to?
If you're all right, I'll present them from here just so I can work the computer a little bit, if that's all right.
You got.
Okay. Um, so these are some minor changes that we're proposing to our construction standards. Um, I'll just try to run through these ones a little quicker. And so the first change is to street intersections. We just want to make it clear in our standards, when there's a larger development that has multiple phasing, that as they look at intersections, all four corners are being really built in one phase, so we're not getting a fourth of an intersection or a half of an intersection. We want to make that clear in our standards. The next couple cha- items, it's to do with drinking water and pressure irrigation water is adding tracer wire. This is a requirement that's coming from the state um that now entities need to, to make sure they're adding tracer wire with their, their water lines. So we're adding that to our standard. There's some cleanup on our sanitary sewer standard. There was, what's being deleted is, is kind of a, a repeat of what's already in a different section, so we're just cleaning that up. We're also putting some language about manholes, um sizing and also we talk about when um, when we get larger sewer line, trunk lines like master plan lines, we, we want to specify that there's a proper lining on them, um, just to protect them from eroding, um, from corrosion basically is what we're trying to protect. So we, we have some specific language in that. We've also updated our stormwater section just to clarify some LID standards that we've already been following, but we want to make sure it's clear uh in, in our standards so we can point developers to those. Just, just clarifying what, what year of, of storm or what storm size to use when they're designing their storm drain reports. Um, let's see, some, and then some street, under our streets improvements, we've cleaned up and added a little bit to our precast wall standard. Um, we've just kind of clarifying the type of wall that, that's allowed. Um, and then usually the name is kind of the color of the stain or, or paint on there. And so we've, we're showing that we're removing it because we are removing some, but then we are uh just clarifying it in our landscaping section. So we removed it from our general street section just so we didn't have it twice and put it in our landscaping section. And then also we have added a section about fencing around the airport um that I might have passed, sorry. But it, it just clarifies as development happens around the airport, what, what type of fencing is, is allowed um at the airport, so. Right here, airport improvements, so.
Chain link and barbed wire.
Um, so there's different kind of areas that, or three different types of fencing that um they're, they're going to allow around the airport and I think Christian is going to kind of monitor that on what location, kind of what's next to that development of what kind of fence goes, but, but we're given some options as we go along there. We're getting a lot of development over by the airport, so we want to have some consistency. Um, and then just some detailing on, on our wall standard. This, this detail now just clarifies that if we have a trail crossing, an access in a industrial area, we want to see ADA detectable ramps or detectable surfaces um for pedestrian safety. These drawings show the tracer wire and kind of where they're, this service drawing just clarifies some part numbers um for water services. Tracer wire again. And then this detail is for a power meter that is not up against a, a building. For example, a signal, it has a power meter, uh we just want a standard construction drawing that. that, so we get consistent on what our meters are, so. Same thing, this is just a multiple meter and I think that's the last one, so. Any specific questions?
I have some questions about the other spec on the power meter there. No, I'm just kidding. I knew you were kidding.
Because I was like, uh, talk to power.
I am really anxious to hear any questions that the planning commission has about the, the technical drawings there.
I have a, I have a question and kind of a comment that sometimes, uh, some of the standards that we change are because new materials come in or new procedures such as the LID. And, uh, for pipe, you know, there are new coatings inside and out, uh, that ma- that are actually, uh, great, uh, improvements on what we have and it's not on our books as being legal to use. And so I think we're trying to keep up to, with the industry on a lot of stuff.
Yeah, for sure.
I didn't even know, for instance, that the city was requiring, uh, coatings on the, on the masonry fences and why it is, until it was explained some years ago that it's easier to get rid of graffiti and stuff like that and that's the reason that we do that. Uh, that's something that I had no idea of, but it's the standard, I guess, in the industry to do that. So, I appreciate the city keeping up on those things. I don't think I have any questions, I think it all makes sense as much as I understand it.
All right, okay.
This is a public hearing, so we'll go into public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come and make a comment? For, speak now or for, come on up, it's your chance.
My name's Gil Rand. This is what I came here for.
Oh, good.
Because I thought this was, um, going to be maybe changing standards for building codes and stuff like that, so, but you're not, you know, and.
Well, this is part of the building codes.
I understand.
But it's mostly for the industrial types.
Civil, yeah.
Buildings and things like that.
Right. So we appreciate you, we appreciate that you're watching us.
Since I'm here, I do have a suggestion for the road.
Thank you.
Since we already have the overpass at nine hundred south, why not just do a frontage road that comes up and that would connect into Center Street? Leave this alone, that solves all the problems, you're not taking anybody's property.
Yeah, if you want to catch me right after this meeting, I'll.
He's here all week.
I am here all week.
Every night.
I think for the record, I'd really like to, um, I think it's been said a couple of times, but the, I think our city, uh, council and staff don't want to take anybody's property and do everything they can to work with property owners if there's a necessity for something to go through, to make sure to, uh, eminent domain is absolutely the very last, last, uh, straw, last choice, uh, based on all the conversations I've had.
I understand that, because being an architect for, we figured fifty years now?
Yeah.
Fifty years that I've been, been a licensed architect and done work. And so I'm familiar with what happens and, and how you have to get projects done and I realize that it's the developers ninety-nine percent of the time that wind up putting in the roads and these things happen when, when the farmers want to finally sell out and, but anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're out of public hearing. Are there, is there any further discussion on the, uh, construction standards? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move that, uh, the city, that planning commission recommends to approve the ordinance to revise the construction standards. Second?
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes. We have one thing left to do and that is, is I would entertain a motion to conclude our meeting.
So moved.
Second.
And opposed and second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you for being here and thanks for all those who participated.